Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. We have a roll call meeting.
Mayor Spicer?
Here.
Mayor Proton Sherwood Green?
Here.
Alderman Morrissey Kurt Taubman?
Here.
Alderman Terrorism there. City Administrator Mr. Hammond?
Here.
And what's up?
Um, I think Clay may be on conference.
Alderman Morris?
That was his attempt.
Can he hear me?
Should be.
If there are...
Is he down here?
Clay, is that you?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Alderman Repertus is the only one missing.
Correct.
Do we have any public comments? We have one, Mr. Don Johnson.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I wanted to speak one more time about the Paris Galveston Science District appointment. I know a letter has already been sent in, but that can be still changed. We still have a little bit of time. I was the representative for eight years. I was probably the most active representative the cities ever had. I accomplished more for the cities than anybody has ever done. I got a program initiated and many cities using a program to ask for rebate of unused allocation fees, and this was thousands of dollars, back to some of the cities where they paid for allocation fees to pump groundwater. They never pumped the groundwater, so it was really just insurance money in case something happened throughout the year that they could use their pumps. That was a very popular thing. Unfortunately, since I've been gone, some of the cities have had trouble with applying for this and keeping up with the dates. It was kind of a complicated system and the dates were very stringent and you needed somebody out there helping the cities get through this. Unfortunately, they've lost that currently. Also, I started a push for a program to do conservation grants, which finally got going just after I left. And they, um, only one of the cities managed to get all of the data in, on the forms, and within the dates required to apply for that. And that's another program, which, you know, these programs are things that only Galveston County cities have been taking advantage of because other representatives out there don't go out there and interact with the cities the way I did. They usually don't, they never show up at council meetings. They never talk to people within the city. While I was there, I also, I composed reports that nobody else got except Galveston County cities on it. Give one of them to you. It kind of showed a comparison of how the different cities reacted to one another. And on here down at the bottom, it shows just for this one year, how many thousands of dollars the city got back. Galveston County, I mean, the Galveston City got $10,000. League City got $7,500. City of Friends, we've got $7,000 something dollars. So, you know, the cities love these, but I dare say, nobody's seen those for the last couple of years because the representatives you've got right now, he didn't do anything like that. You know, and I make presentations on subsidence and where we stand and how all that looks. Everybody, you know, that I showed these to generally loved the reports and said, hey, I understand, you know, are we getting better, are we getting worse? Truly, I don't know what more I could have done to be a good representative. And what's kind of frustrating to me is I'm trying to ask, you know, some of the folks, you know, if they're going to vote for somebody else, why not me? What is it that I should have done that I didn't do? Does such other guy do something? And the answer is no. You know, pretty much it sounds like me, he's a chairwarmer, you know? And a lot of times you get people in appointed positions and they don't do anything. And so that's what we've got now. And I'm afraid that the work that I've done, I've worked so hard for it. If I'm not there to protect it. Galveston County cities, the way the other cities have been here, it's kind of jealous of these programs. They just assume you're away with them. And if they don't have an avid defender, we'll probably lose it. So, I know it's a hard thing to do, but I'm asking y'all to reconsider the letter that y'all send in, ask for that to be rescinded. And if you don't like me, you can just rescind it and don't vote for anybody. But I would hope that you would rescind it and vote for me, so that I could return to that position. I think I've sent an email out and included my phone number on it. If anybody has any questions or wants to know anything, I can't go over too much. In three minutes, I can hardly touch the service.
When you did this perfectly, you're three minutes and five seconds. You did it really well.
Well, I'm glad I didn't go over too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number one on the considered agenda, approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings.
This is not the type of way of all the comment, please mute your phone.
Approve the minute to the regular city council meeting, January 4th, 2020. Y'all have those?
Do I, do I allow to make a public comment remotely?
Um, that, that...
We've moved on from the public comment onto the agenda items. Uh, you need to, if you're going to do a, if you're going to do a public comment on the phone, you need to call City Hall 15 minutes, yeah, 15 minutes before the meeting and get your name put down, so we'll know who you are. And then you can make a public comment, but at this time you need to sign up for that. So we've moved on to some agenda items.
I'd like to do that and got no answer on the phone.
Well, if you called in 20 minutes before 5, there was people here to answer the phone, but after 5, they won't.
Well, you said 20 minutes before the meeting. All your agenda says is to participate remotely, call in for public comments, press to unused your phone and identify yourself. It does not say in your agenda that I need to do this before 5.
There's a view, ma'am. Well, you got three minutes, how about that? I'll let you go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. What's your name?
Andrea Spears. Andrea Spears. I would like to address the beach parking plan, which I've not been able to find on any of the city documents. And I am a beachfront property owner. And my biggest concern, and I have most this concern with several city council aldermen, is that we are putting in parking spaces, according to the last plan that I could find, which was several months ago, that they were going to identify individual parking spaces with ropes and posts. And my biggest concern is that a beachfront property owner, for a 55-day parking event, I'm going to spend 310 days staring at posts and ropes, which is not why I spent money to buy a beachfront post. I understand the GLOs, the golf cart obligations. I understand golf cart people outnumber us beachfront people. I understand that. What I do not understand is the absence of input from beachfront homeowners regarding what we will be looking at from our torches for the other 310 days and the lack of transparency with the city of Jamaica Beach for me to be able to find out what that is. In talking to aldermen, they say, oh, it's there, I cannot find it. So if you could please tell me where I can go to find this plan, I would greatly appreciate it. Again, it just says there is a plan, there will be parking spaces, but I cannot find anything that tells me what this is going to look like and what I'm going to sit on my front porch and stare at for 365 days a year. So like 55-day public parking arrangement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And we'll have the city administrator give you a call tomorrow and fill you in on all the details of where you can find it. Is that good?
Uh, how are you going to reach me?
Is your phone listed here in the city, ma'am?
I have no idea.
If you'd like to give your phone number, I'd be glad to contact you.
So just call 737-1142, and that's the City Hall's phone number.
Call during business hours. I'm sorry.
There was overlap in that speaking. Could you give that phone number?
If you would call City Hall tomorrow between 10:00 a.m. and noon and ask for Brad, it's 409-737-1142. I'll be glad to supply you anything you need.
737-1142.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number one on the considered agenda, approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on January 4th, 2020. Have y'all reviewed the minutes and do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
My name's Mike, I'm also calling to give a public comment. Hello? Good luck. Hi there, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, Mike, but you're interrupting the meeting. We've already passed on public comments.
I just heard the whole discussion before. I'd also like to give a public comment on account of really wasn't very clear how to get on there. So just humor me, I sure appreciate the chance to give a short, under eighty second public comment.
Why don't you wait until we get to the agenda item, which is, I think, number one?
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll ask for a public comment on that section when we get through this meeting. Thank you. Do I have a second on the motion? Any discussion? We've got too many people on phones and stuff in the yard here, kind of loud. Do we have anybody that's approved, approved of the minutes? Motion carries. Number one, the regular agenda, discuss impossible action to adopt an ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending the due protection in beach plan of the city of Jamaica Beach as amended and by providing additional definitions and standards for regulation access and parking on the beach, to provide violations and penalties to provide for servability, to provide for the repeal of all or parts of the ordinance in conflict herewith, and to provide for an effective date. And do I, do I have a motion? Not yet.
I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Do we have any discussion on council?
I have a private comment.
We're fixing to get to you, just hold on a minute. Do I have any discussion on city council? On the claim?
We've been working on this for four years.
We discussed it at life, at the last meeting.
We've had several, we've had several meetings. We've had several public hearings.
This is the plan anyway, according to the court.
I had some objections and...
This is the ordinance that goes with the due protection and beach access. All right, do I have any discussion from the audience that's present? Do I have any discussion on the phone? Just state your name and address, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Mike Darn. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Thanks, my address is 16519 Jamaica Beach Road. Over here, a beachfront owner. And I guess I've been on this for many years and the latest incarnation here, I did provide, I tried to provide input on a couple of occasions. The, you know, I'm happy that there's some kind of an effort now to limit beach access on the 500 feet of the district only and on the southwest side. I'm very unhappy that it's pretty much unlimited access between the two roads, because it really is, that's, that's my stretch beach where I'm at. And it really is just absolutely horrific. We've got people out there all day and night. We've got folks out there lighting fires, running around. There's, I mean, anytime of weather tonight, it's just that absolute, we're all wild, wild, uh, crazy. So, you know, anything we can do to limit beach access is what I'm for. And anything we can do to try to make it better out here is what I'm for. I'm not for opening it up to like it is now, because it's just, they've done this now for years and it just has not been a good deal. This place is jam-packed silly and it really is crazy. So I'm thinking we either need to, and I have recommended that we look for another option. I've been hearing about another current deal where we're trying to put up ropes and things and it'll probably get messed up by tides. And anything we can do to limit the amount of cars is great. And, you know, I just want to just also point out the open beaches act, the OVA, is all about not vehicle access, it's about people's access, and it's also about handicapped access. There's ways we can go about this that do not require that we allow an unlimited, unlimited number of vehicles on the beach. An unlimited number of vehicles on the beach is dangerous, it's insanity. And it gets worse and worse as, as, as everything, as the pressure grows on this resource to open it up. And so we've got to find a way to provide services, find ways to provide, new ways to address this. And if we need to do like a legal action and join with other smaller cities that don't have the luxury like Galveston does of using all the open space on the entire island to justify the number of parking spaces, I think that we can apply for an exception with GLO. I'd like to recommend that we look at that as an option to, to try to find a legal exception for a 3,000 or 3,300-foot beachfront situation, where we do not have to adhere to the strict limits of the GLO, OVA guidelines, because we are in a different situation. We need to think outside the box. So, so anything we can do to limit, anything we can do, let's try to do this. Let's try to, let's try to think outside the box and good luck to us. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone who has a comment? That's not. Is there any more discussion on council?
Clay.
Clay, do you have anything? Can you hear us?
I've heard and, uh, I'm, uh, no, no, no discussion, no due discussion.
Thank you. Is there anybody opposed to this ordinance? Clay, can you just say you're not opposed or I can't see you shake your head no?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Number two. Discussing possible action to adopt an ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, amending the ordinance 2020-5 establishing usage and parking regulations for the city-owned Beach Regatta Basin facility, also known as the Marina, to provide permit requirements, to provide violations and penalties, to provide for servability, and to provide for repeal of all or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and to provide for an effective date as amended, to include parking restrictions on Basin Drive. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this one. I did speak with Alderman Repertus, and this is something that he really cares strongly about, both pros and cons, and has done a lot of work on. And he would like to be a participant in that discussion if we can table.
Sir, if you table it, I would like to make a motion that we postpone it, so Alderman Repertus can participate in the discussion.
May I, ma'am? Well, let's have a second on that, then we can discuss it. We can't discuss it until we have a second and a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second that, considering it.
Well, didn't y'all discuss this last, like the last meeting?
No.
You wasn't? Right.
Um, the, the new ordinance, there's only a couple of changes, amended changes. Every one of the changes in the new ordinance was recommended by Alderman Repertus. And so I'm sure he would not be in conflict with any of the changes. Obviously, he's not here, has to speak for himself. But when we got input from the individuals in the city and the council, this was the recommendation that everybody made as to the changes that they'd like to see.
So we've got two things, we've got two things we can do. You can either repeal your motion and make a motion to accept, or we can vote on your motion in second and move on. What would you like to do, Mr. Johnson?
Just a minute.
Uh, the...
Do you have, do you have one?
The changes, if, if, on, if you look at page 10, it's the first page of the amended ordinance, section B, the only change in there is the last part of the sentence, obtaining a special permit from the city administrator if any commercial borges were to be launched from our Marina. Obviously, the reason that would be in there is if we needed to launch a commercial barge to work on bulkheads at the Marina or such as that, we need to have that option to do so. Under section 3A, which is on page 11...
That was, that was something that we wanted to discuss.
Which was?
3A.
3A, correct. The difference in that one, the changes, were the recommendation, recommendation that Alderman Repertus had made. And the cost of the permit was going to be reduced from $25 to $15, which is the new change, and any additional vehicles are $5. Addition to that, the permit would no longer expire for homeowners and residents.
So if you pay $25...
You don't have to annually...
In 2020, you're good?
You're good, as long as you're maintaining yourself as a homeowner or resident. Now, if you change vehicles or your sticker gets old or whatever, for $5, you can do a replacement sticker. The daily pass is still at $10, so that hasn't changed at all. Under section C, it calls for just one other sentence at the very end. It says, this includes passing stickers to unauthorized users. And what has happened is the police have found a few folks have actually taped their sticker in their car and it's passing out to renters instead of buying day passes.
So they have to be fixed to the...
It has to be a fix, yes, ma'am. And under section four, the only change that was made was, section C was added. It says violations of section three, which is what we just covered. In other words, fraudulent passing stickers would result in a fine, a minimum fine of $500. They've worked to do that. So we're trying to shut down any fraudulent use, especially since we're doing the lifetime stickers. Then we want to make sure that folks don't take advantage of the situation.
Well, that would be up to the council. I'm just speaking for where we were. I'm good as long as the price has been frozen. That was my main objection.
Yes, we lowered it from the $25 annual fee to a $15...
I'm not worried about that, as long as you didn't have to do it every year.
Right.
So would you like to change your motion to accept the ordinance or go ahead and vote to postpone? I mean, you said you wanted to postpone because Russell went here, but Russell's the one that came up with a lot of these changes.
He had discussed things with you.
Mark?
I thought one of the things that we wanted to address in this was that one of our old ordinances had assigned the boat slip owners parking spots there that we needed to readdress that. I'm just wanting to make sure that we're the most efficient with our time and don't do an ordinance and then really have, you have to do it again in a month.
The, that the boat slip owners situations is going to get into a lot of legalities that probably will be a year or two down the road before we're able to resolve that issue. But currently, boat slip owners are not cited when they're parked in front of their own dock.
Okay.
Whatever we vote on can ultimately be changed if need be.
This is an amendment to an ordinance that you guys have already passed and you can always amend it.
We can always go back to the amendments again.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my postponement request and make the motion.
I have a quick question, guys.
Go ahead, Clay.
This is Alderman Morris. Where does it address the location of the sticker?
Uh, they're not. It's instructed on the application, Alderman, where it says you have to have it on the front windshield. And they did specify an area, but most folks put it over their regular registration. Addition to that, we're no longer selling the trailer permits, the trailer stickers with this, because there was way too much confusion on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Do I have a second now on the new?
I did that.
Do we have any discussion anymore? Anybody, anybody opposed? Say yea or nay, Clay, if you oppose or don't?
Opposed, which, pardon, I didn't hear that.
She changed, she changed her motion to accept the changes in the ordinance. We got a second for Morrissey.
I'll accept.
Okay. Motion, okay.
I just have one question for Brad. When there's a trailer up there, but you have no idea, how do you...
Loan trailers have never been permitted on there, even in the old ordinance, and it's still the same at the time.
Nobody opposes the motion carrying. Number three, discuss impossible action to consider an application from Si, because I cannot pronounce his name, for a special use permit for a mixed beverage permit at 16708 San Luis Pass Road, Suite E. Do I have a motion?
Where is that?
We need to...
Do I have, I need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
To discuss it, we have to have a second.
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
The reason we do this is to say, we, any bar or liquor store has to get a special use permit because somewhere in our ordinance, it says they do. Buck, Buck had to get one when Buck's Bar opened. Now that he's moved it down to another spot, he's going to go apply for a number.
Is this behind the...
It's, it's, it's the liquor store.
It's, it's where Buck's West was.
He's going to open a restaurant.
Si has applied for a TABC permit to sell mixed beverages in a restaurant that he, at this juncture, wants to name Galveston Night. Galveston Night is a, I met with Si and he says he's planning on a, a, a kind of higher-end cuisine, mostly seafood. He doesn't want a full bar there. They're not applying for a late-hours permit. But by the zoning of the commercial district here, if you are going to have a mixed beverage permit, you have to go to the planning and zoning. Last Wednesday, last Thursday, we had, Wednesday, excuse me, we had a planning and zoning commission meeting. The zoning commission all voted unanimously to accept a special use permit. They had five votes to go to council. Now it's up to you guys to decide what happens here.
Do we have any more discussion? Anybody opposed? Clay, I need you to speak. Opposed, yea or nay?
I got it, Clay.
Alderman Morris?
Yes.
Do you, do you, do you agree with his motion to consider an application for Si to open up a special use permit, application?
Yes.
Okay, anybody opposed?
Yes, I did, Alderman Morris.
Motion carries. It's a little awkward doing this on the phone, isn't it? Number four, discuss, discussion and possible action to approve a contract between Galveston County and the city of Jamaica Beach for election services for the 2021 general election being held on May 1st, 2021. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, ready.
Do I have a second? Morris, Clay, did you, did you second it?
One, one more time, please.
Did you second it?
I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Anybody opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Number five, discussing possible action to adopt an ordinance of the city of Jamaica Beach, Texas, providing for the holding of general, of a general election to be held May 1st, 2021, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two aldermen, and providing details relating to the holding of such elections. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, ready.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Clay?
Anybody opposed?
No.
Anybody on council? Motion carried. Number six, the discussion and possible action to approve a resolution of the City of Jamaica Beach, Texas, designating an official newspaper for the City of Jamaica Beach for a period commencing October first, twenty twenty, and continuing through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion as stated.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any discussion? Anybody opposed? Clay, do you oppose?
No, I do not.
Anybody up here opposed? Motion carried. Number seven, discussing possible action to consider changing the regular city council meetings from the first and third Monday of the month to every third Monday of the month. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion because I wanted to discuss it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, so let me discuss it.
Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the purpose is and will that limit us in ability to gather information and not prepare to vote on?
And I hate voting and, I mean, just seeing something and voting the same day. Like having the, having the, uh, the information brought to you and then voting on it the, the same night without, you know, I think real slowly.
Sometimes you have to gather information and, and, but that's kind of.
Uh, what, in, in this format, uh, when, when Crystal came on board, she, she brought the format for you guys, obviously, to discuss and consider for action all agenda items. Uh, the, the main, uh, reasoning that we would do this is, is actually it just the opposite of what it sounds like. It gives you more time to research items that you're unsure on, such as on this ordinance. If, if you wanted to table it, then you have a month to do the research instead of two weeks to do research on items that you don't feel comfortable in passing. Additionally, uh, it takes three to four full days for the city staff to prepare an agenda for the next meeting. That's four days a month minimum that we are not doing projects. We're not doing other work-related items, just doing housekeeping to, to put an agenda item together, the packets together, the information that you need together.
We're not getting it. I know everything is new, but along the same lines, we're not getting it early enough to really investigate because some of us do work on the day and I would hate to see us postpone five out of six items on an agenda.
Uh, un- understandable. Uh, one of the reasons you, it's almost impossible to get it early is because theoretically to get it in the time that you should have it, we would be working on the next agenda tomorrow. And, and so.
See, even though you have two weeks in between the meetings, it's really not two weeks. It's, we really only have five days.
And, and we don't have two weeks.
And sometimes the agenda comes in, in midweek.
So if, if you have.
So we may have agenda items, we may have the agenda itself ready, but all, everything, the packet itself and all the supporting documents for each agenda item, that's a whole other different animal.
I mean. If I could, if I could just add, if, if we have a meeting on the first of the month, you're working the month before to get that meeting ready. And if we just have the third of the, the third week of the month to have the meeting, we will already have the information before that meeting. Quicker, quicker, quicker than we do now because of the delay we have to do. So when we sit down here on the first week, uh, of the month, this is all fresh and new. But if we come on the third week of the month, we have already been able to digest it. And when we come to the meeting, we can, we can make a decision on it and vote on it, knowing a whole lot more than we do now. I believe that's what he's trying to say. Absolutely. In addition to that, if we have an agenda item, first, by posting it early, the citizens were more transparent because the citizens will have that information way on the floor. And the, and the, all the info that we have here will be posted on our website. They can take phone calls on the information.
The other thing is, is that, um, I just lost my train of thought. It's just, I was like in mid-thought and then, um.
Uh, this is, this is, this is a, uh, post-agenda related fatigue syndrome that.
I mean, realistically, we have this meeting tonight, okay? Next week, we have to start preparing to get, for the next meeting. So it's, it's hard. It's very, let me take, let me take this, uh, for instance, these, um, it, I drew up the, the ordinance for the election. I drew up the resolution for the newspaper. Those each took me a day to do, okay? Brad, uh, has other city administrative things going on. The packet and agenda would have probably been out a whole lot sooner, but Brad, no, it's not Brad's fault. Brad was, you know, Brad needed to go in and do his revisions on these ordinances that we were amending and proposing. So, I mean, it's just like, I mean, as soon as we drop home, we got to pick up in a hurry and.
There's lots of ways to postpone it. It's something we really want to dig into.
Well, and if, if there's an item that comes up and it's pressing, you can always call a special meeting. No, no, you, there's no, there's nothing in the law that says you can't meet outside of your regular meeting day.
All I got to do is say, we need to have a meeting.
Exactly. If you were like, as long as we have seventy-two hours to post that, that agenda and get, you know, the information out, um.
And I thought about this when I, when I read it on the first time and it makes sense. I try to keep everything simple. I don't try to comp- complicate things. And if we have two meetings a month, we actually don't know anything at the first meeting. We're blind. If we have the meeting on the third week, we've already gone through everything and we're a whole lot more educated. Then we can ask an educated question about it instead of just trying to figure out what's going on.
And you can always postpone, like your, 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 you know, the ordinance. You can always postpone something for, to the next meeting or to a different, you know, I, you know, I want to postpone this and I want to direct staff to do X, Y, and Z. So that way, we have enough time, we have three weeks, two and a half weeks realistically, to cut, to do the research that, that the council wants us to do with the, the correct information. We're not meeting, we're not rushed, and we can come back to that next meeting and, and give our report or whatever it is that the captain mayor has requested.
Well, I'm for less ordinances.
Well, we've, we've already agreed to hire that company that's going to get them all wonderful.
Um, so I'm not opposed to this, um, as I'm always about better efficiency. Um, the other thing I don't like is, you know, tonight, discuss a possible action. So we have to make a motion so that we can discuss it. I enjoy discussions and I appreciate discussions because that's why there's five opinions, six opinions here so that we can all interject and, you know, bounce off each other. So I don't know if one, if some of them that are going to be deeper discussion could be a separate, so there would be two little line items.
We, we could do, one, those items will, those items which you can do, we can just put, no, you can put discussion, um, in, for discussion and consideration.
You don't have to consider it, you don't have to vote on it.
You don't have to vote on it, just discussion.
We don't want to vote on this tonight, too. We could just move on to the next.
It's discussion and consideration and we can just discuss it and.
Can we get an agenda without the backup early on?
Absolutely.
Because that would say, oh, gosh, I wonder what that is.
But again, I think, I think you guys are the ones that's made the decision and y'all do need the backup.
If we just had this without.
But if I give you that, you're going to have questions and be like, why do you have this? Well, this is why. And, you know, I have, I don't know, I don't know what y'all had before, but I have these discussion forms that I put in front of each agenda item. I don't know if y'all have noticed that.
No, we just, we just had.
You just had your packet. So these discussion forms, I try to put as much information, useful information on here as possible. This is what this agenda, uh, this is what this item is, this is why it's come up on the agenda. Or, you know, I'll put this was postponed from the previous meeting and, you know, this is what council has directed staff to do. Um, so that way y'all guys are kind of in the, like, it's not just, here's this agenda item or who asked for this. Well, you know, Alderman Green requested this item to be on the agenda and he's going to be speaking on this.
Right.
So, um, I, I'm really, as far as this is my third meeting, I'm really trying to give y'all guys as much as information as I can, um.
And this is not set in stone if we meet the first and third. Uh, and I kind of appreciate her trying to, I understand and I appreciate you trying to get a little more efficient. Because I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to change if y'all ever known me.
Well, I mean, all of us would probably prefer to come once a month instead of twice a month.
Well, this would give you an opportunity to study what we're going to talk about.
But we would, we would have all the information then since you would have three weeks, three weeks.
Yeah.
We would have it a week.
Yes.
That's what, that's what, that's the point I was trying to make. We'd be more term that'll wait until we come to the.
So we can investigate, we can discuss.
And you can come up here to city hall and talk with her.
Or Brad.
Or Brad and say, what's going on?
Well, she explained the newspaper to me this week. I thought we were facing a newspaper.
Yeah, like the packets, they're great.
So, I, I tried to, I mean, any, any suggestions to. Um, but these discussion forums I used at my previous city and it really helped council a lot. And it's not just like you're thrown into the meeting, they have no idea what this agenda is, agenda item is, why it's on here, who asked for it. You know, I try to answer all the questions that I can, think of, who would ask and put those on those forums for y'all.
Any more discussion?
Crystal, you're, Crystal, you're doing a wonderful job at, at, at a lot of this.
Thank you.
Ginger?
Ginger Jones, one six six one two, Curly. Uh, would we have this information too?
Yes, if I'm, if I'm posting it on, the, the, the minute that I post it, I have it ready and posting it outside on that bulletin board, it's going up on the website.
Okay, and will it, the, the TVs be working with that information?
One step at a time.
Well, we haven't seen them yet.
We're, we'll get there, one step at a time.
I expect you to do, y'all, the council, but these, these kind of papers and things so we can see what y'all are talking about.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm confused. My confusion is that.
There, there's someone speaking, please. Hold, hold your comments on the phone.
Lorraine Jones, one six seven one two, Jelly Roger. When will, it, it, it needs to be posted seventy-two hours before this meeting.
Correct.
So when exactly would it be on the website?
As soon as, it, it, at the minimum seventy-two hours.
At the minimum. And.
So in order for a meeting to occur, it has to be posted at a minimum seventy-two hours prior to that meeting.
Or she could post it a week before.
I could post it a week before, as long as it's ready, yeah.
Okay, and our twenty twenty-one?
Now, there could be amendments, you know, there can be, uh, amendments to it. So those are, you know, it's very rare that that happens, but you can add a supplemental agenda to that. If somebody decided, oh, you know what, I forgot to add this, as long as it's within that seventy-two, before the seventy-two hours, we can add that supplemental agenda to it.
Sure. And maybe I misunderstood, but would you be getting the information to the council earlier than that seventy-two hours that it's posted?
That would be the point.
But we would get it also.
Everybody would get it all at the same time.
And so it would be on the website, so we would have access to it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And that's always the goal, uh, is to have it a week early, but sometimes when the supporting documentation is not.
When I first heard it, I, we had, I had a discussion with Brad and I, you know, when something hits you like that, you have to think about it. But after I thought about it, it makes more sense to do it that way because we actually get more information before the meeting. And everybody else gets more information.
And you don't have to, you don't.
For a longer period of time.
Right, and you don't have to, um, make decisions on things that night. You can postpone it to the next meeting. If it's something that's that important and in an urgency, you can call a special meeting. You just have to have four council members to do that, so.
Mr. Brad, I think there's a phone caller that wants. Go ahead on the phone for discussion.
Andrew in Erie, my question was, if a special meeting is called, will, where will homeowners be notified of a special meeting? And again, I've had a real problem with transparency and finding things. I'm finding out things through Facebook rather than through the city website, which has been really rather frustrating.
So, I, I, I apologize for that. I, sure.
It, it, my concern is that by going down to one meeting a week, if you miss an email, you're kind of screwed as a homeowner because you, you have one time to know about something. And I have found the city not to be rather forthcoming in letting us know what's going on at city council meetings. Facebook unfortunately has been a better friend, which is very sad, for finding out what's going on in my own city than is the city website. So I'm hoping, we have a new city secretary, welcome Crystal.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that these things will change. Uh, but that is my big concern with going down to one city council meeting a month, that when a, a emergency meeting or a separate meeting is scheduled, that it's not going to go out as a deep blast. We have Zoom, we have phone calls. Can the city not do blast out to its residents and let them know about these changes?
Well, let me, I, I can, I can answer that for you. Both, we've made a couple of changes. I know, I know you know about Crystal, but, uh, we've replaced our city administrator also. And, and I have, uh, hot expectations that things are going to change around here. These changes were made because of what you're discussing. If we have one meeting a month, your, the information that you will get on our website will be week, at least a week before the next, the, the, the third, the first meeting of the month, the only meeting of the month. So you will literally have more time to read it and make phone calls to, to city hall and ask questions about it than you've ever had before. And if we have to have a special meeting, it has to be posted just like a regular meeting, seventy-two hours before we have it. And it will be on the website and you can make phone calls and call Crystal or the city administrator and ask questions like you've always been able to do.
Also, um, Brad, Brad, also Brad and I are working on, um, getting a, a, a new website. Uh, our website is a mess. I mean, I, I can't even find things on it. I, it's just, I'm, I get anxiety just going to it. Uh, we can't even fit our, our two, our twenty twenty-one agendas and minutes on the website. So I'm, I'm having to post them on the front page, but just be patient with us. I'm, this is only my, this, the, the first day of my eighth week. So, um, we're, we are, um, making changes as fast and efficiently as we can. Um, but there is, there are things that are changing, that are going to change. So that way, um, uh, residents are able to access whatever it is that they need, um, in a timely manner.
I, I would strongly suggest you look at Zoom meetings rather than phone call meetings because as someone that's attended a lot of Zoom meetings as a teacher, looking at facial expressions of people as they vote on things and as they discuss things is relevant to what actually happens at the meeting. Whereas by just listening on the phone, I, I can't hear people. And again, this is my concern with I went to my meeting, it's a bad connection, I'm lost.
I understand. At my previous meeting, um, we, it was a small city as well. You're going to kind of have some of the same issues, unfortunately. But I do agree with you, uh, but you, I mean, the cost in audio and visuals that we would have to put into to do that, it, it's just something that the city doesn't have, um, nor is it budgeted at this time. Hopefully, maybe for twenty twenty-two, that's something that we can do, but, um, at that, at this time, this is all.
I have so much facial expression.
Right, this? Yeah, you see it, all the eyes, mouths.
Well, if there's any, if, if there's not any more discussion, uh, is anybody opposed to this change? Clay, you opposed?
No.
Motion carries. City administrators report. Uh, well, uh, Crystal gave multiple reports.
I just tried to get the meeting, sorry.
She, she, she and I are, uh, actually working on a lot of enhancements for the city, uh, trying to get to a point of, uh, more transparency, better transparency. We're looking at, uh, multiple vendors for actually updated websites. Some of them are, Amunicode is, is the, the leading one right now. And I gotta tell you, they, they have come out with a very good-looking product.
And I got to tell you, they have come out with a very good-looking product. It's user-friendly, not only just as the staff is concerned, but even more so as the citizens are concerned with the information that a citizen has access to. What we would like to do, the goal for this thing, is to get to a point where our city, every citizen in our city can access anything that you can access or I can access. And that's where we should be. That's where we're getting. And we're in the process of doing that right now. We're also looking at enhancements when it comes to just work efficiency. We've got a lot of projects that are going on now that a lot of the taxpayers' money is caught up in. The water line project, the road and drainage project. And so we really have to get on the top of these things to make sure that the rollout is as smooth as possible. But we're progressing on our timetables for those things.
How you got it? Mayor's report. I just want to let everybody know that I've never felt better about who's in City Hall. And since I've been here, I have utmost confidence in y'all. And I love the changes you're making. So just keep up the good work. And I was going to let everybody know that I am not running for mayor. But there's going to be some seats open on City Council, so somebody should come and put an application in for City Council. We have two aldermen running for mayor, so there's a possibility that there'd be two openings. There could just be one. There you go, who wins. But everybody needs to participate, come put in an application. And that's all I got. Alderman's reports. Mayor Pro team?
Nothing.
Alderman Curtis?
I have lined out the dates for the community events for the year. Brad and I laid out the whole year because we're just a fun machine. So if you want to take notes, February thirteenth, we'll be doing our golf cart parade with the king cakes. April third, Easter. We'll get a time when it gets a little bit closer. It'll probably be like two or three, early afternoon. October thirty-first, Halloween. December fourth, Christmas. It'll be a boat parade and holiday event at the park combined like they always are. And I've had a request for Fourth of July golf cart parade if I find a lot of interest in that. I think we're game for that. And on the golf cart note, I wanted to just make a public comment. So anybody that's going to get their plates for their golf cart, when you get there, you need to have a picture of the serial number. I was glad that I still had it in my deleted folder on my phone, but you have to have it through with a picture. So you can't just give them your serial number and expect that they weed you.
If you fill out that application, I didn't ask them.
There's no discussion.
The attendant that I had at the place asked for mine and she took a photocopy. I added, you know, to her and everything. So take it just to be safe because you don't want to get in that line.
Alderman Russell, you have a report?
Oh, I just realized. I had my insurance, so that was satisfactory. No other than I'm hoping to stick around as an alderman.
Alderman Morris, do you have a report?
A little difficult, but not at this time. Thank you, though.
All right. We don't have a policeman here for the police report. And we don't have a fireman here for the fire report. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Anybody opposed to adjourn? We are adjourned.